It's seven o'clock, February 22nd. I'd like to call this regular board meeting order. Let's all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. Kelly, we do roll call, please.
Ms. Flynn?
She's here.
Mr. Galloway?
Here.
Ms. Johnson?
She's excused.
Ms. Stadler?
Here.
Mr. Seng?
Here.
Mr. White?
Present.
Mr. Wolf is here.
Here.
This better bid?
Here.
Ms. Yurk is here.
Here. Thank you. What need to do? Eric, it's... So first thing we have is a student, Kayla Dixon from... Well, she's from the Beacon School District. She's receiving recognition from Bosse's or as a student of distinction. And Principal Schron, are you going to speak about Kayla?
Yes, thank you. First of all, just thank you very much for inviting us here to be present, to present to your board. We have our student and our student's teacher, Ms. Kosa, here. And what I'm going to do is just basically explain what this student of distinction is. I am then going to pass along to Ms. Kosa, who will introduce her student and say a few words about why she nominated her student to receive this award. And then I'll ask Kayla just to say a few words and we'll be done with our presentation. So very briefly, all of the different programs at Duchess Bosse's are very well aware of the fact that sometimes our shared students don't always feel that same sense of connection if they were full-time at the district. And some years back, Dr. Hulley asked all the principals to make sure that we create a process where we could share good information and good news about our students. So the boards that support our students and send them to Bosse's are aware of the wonderful work that they do. And I had shared earlier today a copy of the certificate that we will be sending to Kayla that's in the mail that describes what it is to be a student of distinction at Duchess Bosse's at the Career and Technical Institute. We want to make sure that the students are learning more than just hands-on career opportunity. We really want to teach them what we call O-Pro ethic, which is guidance, optimism, professionalism, responsibility, and opportunity. And I asked our faculty to make nominations and Ms. Kosa, who was the teacher of careers in animal plant sciences, nominated Kayla. And if I could, I would like to turn it over to Ms. Kosa to say a few words and then introduce our student.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Schron. Thank you, everyone, for having us here tonight. I'm thrilled to be able to present Kayla Dixon, a nominator for the student of distinction because when I got this email that described, you know, a young person who is succeeding in the program this year. I have a lot of great students, but she came to mind immediately because I've known Kayla for two years now. And in person, she has always been a little quiet in the classroom. But through the pandemic, she has really found her voice. She has always been a proactive, hard-working student in class, extremely bright, extremely motivated, and always going above and beyond, but so quietly and unrecognizably because she just really did her own thing. She truly wanted to do well for herself and she cared about the work we were doing. So when I had the opportunity to nominate her, I was completely thrilled because it was so apparent that through emails, text messages, you know, chat boxes, online videos, and presentations, like she just had an opportunity for me to see her words and her work and her participation so much more apparently than I think I had been able to. And I think it just, she was able to find her voice and a little bit of a medium for communicating the things that she has been doing, but in a more present, like kind of a presented way. So I'm really, really glad to present Kayla Dixon as the student of distinction. She deserves it. She, through everything that's going on with the pandemic, all the hiccups that we've all been having with... I have students who tell me about, you know, they've lost internet, they have family members that have been killed. They have had all kinds of amazing challenges that have happened, and those are completely valid excuses. And what I know Kayla a little personally, and she has all kinds of stuff going on in her life, just like we all do. And she has never used it as an excuse. She has never brought it up. In fact, she prefers to keep it private. And she still excels at a tremendous rate and quality. And I'm just so proud to have gotten to know her in the past few years, and I'm so proud of her, you know, to be able to see her really kind of blossom in a really authentic way. So thank you so much for hearing us out.
Thank you so much. And I was wondering if I could just ask Kayla to... Oh, she's much more expert at online learning than we are. Just to unmute herself. Normally, at this point in person, I'd be handing out a... It's not what it actually looks like, but it basically is this certificate of distinction. It says, "For hard work dedication to studies embodiment of positive behavior. We recognize Kayla Dixon as a student of distinction." And I've shared this document already with the board, so they know what it says. But I was hoping, Kayla, you might say a word or two about what it means to be in the program of current animal plant sciences, and particularly what it means to be a student who is splitting your time between attending, remotely attending, CTI and Beacon High School.
Thank you. Good evening. I would like to take this moment to thank my teacher, Mrs. Kosa, for always taking the time to getting to know each and every one of her students. Her support and tenacity and pushing and motivating us every day is, in my own, very instrumental to my success in this program. Thank you to the Board of Education for recognizing all these amazing students in the district. Generally speaking, most people would describe me as a shy and introverted student. My decision to join the Bosse's program was largely due to the fact that I wanted to step out of my comfort zone. And Bosse's has helped me achieve this goal. It opened my eyes to unique and new experiences that I wanted to accomplish. I've been able to visit colleges, clinics, where I'm able to, when I'm given opportunities to explore topics that I've been very interested in. And what I feel like Bosse's has done for me is provided me with a space to step out of my comfort zone and really develop the sense of who I am and what I want to do with my future. My future is bright and as I want it to be, and I will be going to college to study animal plant science. Bosse's helped me make this decision, and I'm really extremely grateful and humbled and honored to be able to be able to be upon this program. Thank you so much for this recognition, and I hope you all have a good night.
Thank you so much, Kayla and Ms. Kosa and everyone else who's listening. Thank you so much to the board for allowing us this opportunity. Dr. Hulley sends his regards. He does have another commitment tonight, so we could not be here. But just once again, the opportunity to share with you our shared students and let you know the wonderful work that they're doing and to give us this opportunity to thank the board for allowing students to present to you. So thank you so much.
Thank you so much for coming, Kayla. Thank you so much for speaking. I think I'm watching your family on another little screen who looks very proud of you. And I feel just as glowing as they do. And I just want to say, anytime you want to share one of our students with us, we would love to hear. We need to hear from our students more in general. So really, you have made this board meeting so much better for us tonight by your presence, though you don't have to stay. The rest gets really boring. But yeah, thank you, thank you. And congratulations on all your hard work.
And I...
Oh, you muted yourself.
I told everyone, as soon as the presentation was over, they could feel free to leave, so they're probably over.
Absolutely.
Okay.
You're welcome to stay, but you're also welcome to leave. And thank you, Ms. Kosa, for speaking so warmly about Kayla. It's really amazing to hear, you know, teachers really connect with their students. It's such a... That means so much. So thank you, thank you.
Just quickly, can I ask a question? Typically, when we do this in person, we would take a picture with Kayla, and we would make sure it gets covered in the newspaper. So hopefully, I'm sure the district's already on it, but it would be nice to extend this honor to the community and let them know about her accomplishments.
We'll make sure that we've got some photos and send them to you as well.
That would be great. At least we can serve on our website. Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a great night.
You too.
Can we just end the meeting now?
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you all. Bye-bye.
Bye. Thank you. Have a great night. Okay, just kidding. Next up is open to the public. Is there anyone... We're going to open the chat. If there's anyone who would like to make a public comment. Mike, are... Do you think... Are we still waiting, or do you think that's a no?
I think it's a no, but let me just try one more time. Okay, I'm going to say that's probably a no.
Okay, thank you so much. So next on our agenda is our workshop. First, we're going to hear from John Giacometta, Director of Athletics, about the possibility of moving to Section 9 athletics. John?
Thank you, and I hope no one's sick of hearing from me. I know this is two in a row here. But basically, in this past year, you know, due to COVID really sparking it and, you know, along with having some lengthy conversations with a community members, coaches, students, like we decided to take a look at the possibility of moving our sections. So basically, in New York State Athletic, the state is broken down into different sections where you would be competing for league championships, section championships, so on and so forth. And then you would eventually make your way into regional championships and hopefully to state championships. So right now, Beacon's a member of the Section 1 Athletic Association, where we are typically in competition with schools primarily in Westchester County, Rockland County, and Putnam County. There are a handful of schools that are located in Duchess County that we'll speak about. But basically, I really wanted to look at basically the efficiency of our programs, what we were doing, who we were competing against, and some possible equity things and issues that I personally felt that Beacon, you know, was lacking compared to amenities and other things that schools in our section had. So what I did was I was able to put together some information, some statistics as well, to talk about why we're considering this change, so on and so forth. I do ask, if you do have questions, feel free to put them in the chat. We can also discuss at length after, and I would be happy to answer as many things as I can. I am, just in the past six months, becoming more familiar with the policies that Section 9 has. And while it is similar, there are differences. But if I don't know, tonight, we could certainly take our time and I can go into figuring that out. So without further ado, we can get started, Mike. So first is why we're researching this change. And the number one reason that we're taking a look is competitiveness. And the reason I say that is there's a large number of schools in Section 1 Class A. We are considered Class A. The classes range from AA, B, C, down to D. Within Section 1, we have a very high amount of schools, which basically means more competition for us compared to Section 9, which has minimal, which we'll look at in a moment. And then also looking at the athletic history that we had here in Beacon. Our success rate, and the way that I determined this, was our success rate with achieving section championships, which we'll go into a little bit more detail shortly. COVID-19 travel restrictions, we all know that it's been a little bit different this year regards where we can go and what we can do. The big one for me was basically not being able to attend the New York City Armory for our winter track team. It's one of our most prominent programs, and the fact that it wasn't in the correct zone for us to attend, we were limited from going to this location. Aligning with the majority of the Duchess County and Mid-Hudson Valley School District, a majority of the schools in Duchess County, and let alone right across the river in Orange County, are a part of the Section 9 Athletic Association. Medium household incomes, to take a look at where we compare it to the other counties, and ultimately, travel. And not necessarily distance, but ease of travel compared to traveling to northern schools compared to going down into Westchester during the 3:00, 4:00 o'clock range during the week, which we usually hit an abundant amount of traffic. Different opportunities that Section 9 would offer, such as merging in two-sport athletes. A big topic of conversation is our crew team right now. Section 9, I know for a fact, would be willing to merge with us for such a program. And also the opportunity to have our athletes competing in one, more than one sport during the course of the season. For instance, we could have a varsity soccer player kicking field goals during one of our varsity football games. And then finally, the potential financial implications. It's not a drastic change, but according to my calculations, we would be saving money if we were to make this change. Next, Mike? So this slide that you see here is a comparison of the number of schools that we compete against on a yearly basis. So in green, I have Section 9 compared to the red, which is Section 1. So if you look at the left column of the screen, you'll notice the winter track, soccer, baseball, softball, volleyball, football, girls' lacrosse. This is the amount of school, or these are the amount of schools that we are competing with in Section 9 in red compared to what we would be competing with in Section 9 in green. So for instance, for wrestling and track, right now, we are competing with 43 different schools in order to win the section championship, whereas Section 9 is 15. Soccer, baseball, softball, basketball, right now, we're competing with upwards of 30 teams to go to a section championship, whereas Section 9 is 11. Volleyball, 26 to 7. Football, 27 to 8. So you could just see by merely changing sections, we would statistically be increasing our opportunity for our students to compete in postseason play. And I'll go into a little bit further later, but the basic goal is to be able to provide the best opportunity for our student athletes in Beacon. What's going to be the most memorable experience that we have? Now, our boys' soccer program, which is a great team, for instance, you know, making a sectional semifinal match is great, and it's awesome, but in my personal opinion, being part of a section championship and winning that trophy within the section, it's a much more valuable experience, just in my opinion, of winning a section champion from competing in Section 9 when I was in high school, to being at schools where I've seen this happen. So if you also look at the right side of the column, you'll see the overall size ranking. So right now, in Section 1, we're ranked as the 20th largest school out of 31s, whereas in Section 9, we'd be fifth. So we'd basically be right in the middle of pack when it comes down to the amount of kids that we have in our high school that are able to compete. The more kids that you have in the high school, the better opportunity to get athletes to make a more competitive team. Some other factors, traveling to opponents, while comparably, Section 9 schools are a similar distance, many of these schools are not accessible to the Deconics. So basically, within Section 1 Athletics, you'll hear about playing Lakeland High School, for instance. And while you may go on MapQuest, and that's fine, you have to remember that our buses transporting our students aren't able to take the Deconic Highway. So while a lot of schools may be aligned through Westchester County along the Deconic, we either have to take Route 9 or go to 684, which typically results in a time being anywhere from 15 to 20 minutes more, just because we have to take these alternate routes. Section 9 Athletics is basically Orange County, Ulster County, Sullivan County, and Duchess County, which is your simple shot of taking 84 to the thruway, 84 to 17. It's, you know, when it looked down of traffic and, you know, the time of day that we're traveling, I'm sure all of us have traveled through Westchester. When it gets to late afternoon, it could kind of be a hassle with a lot of people coming in and out of the city. The margin opportunities, like I mentioned, crew in particular, but it seems, and it's nothing against Section 1, it seems that Section 9s are more willing to allow merge opportunities for different sports that a school may be struggling with. For instance, a couple of years ago, we tried merging with Spackenkill High School for swim. Section 1 turned it down. At that point in time, they weren't authorizing us to do that. Whereas we know for a fact, if Spackenkill, which is in Section 9, we would then have an opportunity to merge with them to make a bigger program and then become more competitive. And then, as I mentioned, athletes authorized to participate in the program. You would be allowed to do two sports in one season. According to Section 9, it would be up to our district to regulate how we wanted to structure it. But this is certainly another way for our students to get more opportunity and spend more time out in the fields. Next, Mike? So looking at a little bit of Beacon history, so I wanted to stop at 1990. I figured a 30-year analysis would suffice. So since 1990, the Beacon City School District has won 10 section championships. Six of these 10 section championships have been from track and bowling, which arguably are individual sports when you consider that the athlete is competing individually for their certain event. That means since 1990, the Beacon City School District has won four section championships in team sports. So while you think about a lot of our prominent programs and how well we're doing, below, you'll see the programs that actually have never won a section championship in Beacon history. Boys' soccer, football, wrestling, boys' tennis, boys' swimming. Compared to the female sports that we offer, these sports have never won a section championship in Beacon history. Girls' lacrosse, girls' tennis, girls' swim, golf, bowling, cross-country volleyball, and basketball. So that's over 50% of our programs have never run a section championship. And over 2/3 of our female programs have never had this opportunity either. As I mentioned before, looking at statistics, the number of schools we would need to compete against, we would automatically be in a better situation to compete by competing against less schools. Go ahead, Mike? Financial comparisons. I know you see a lot of numbers on the board. I'm trying to stick to Section 1 being red, Section 9 being green. While Section 9, at the top of the left-hand column, you will see is initially a larger initiation fee for our school to join, official fees are quite drastic. You see a large difference when it comes down to how much we are paying officials per event. So I took a report from our 2018-19, our full, last full season that we had, and was able to do a quick report. And basically, for every varsity game, we're saving $28, JV game 35, and modified 32, if we were simply to make the change to Section 9 Athletics. On the right side of the screen, you'll see the base fee at the top right for Section 9. When you compare that to the Section 1 fee, the projected official fees, along with a fee for the New York City Armory, which is $2,500, the bottom of the page, you'll see that we can possibly save up to $5,500 if we were to make the move. Once again, not an exact deal breaker, but I do think every penny counts, and it wouldn't hurt for us to, you know, explore an option, considering that we can save money doing so. Go ahead, Mike? Medium household income, which I thought was a very interesting comparison. So looking at the statistics for Duchess County, the median household income, or how much money that household is bringing in, is an average of $81,000 for the 2018-19 year, I believe. Comparing that between Section 1 and Section 9. So at our $81,000 threshold for median household income, Section 1, Rockland County was $93,000, Westchester $96,000, and Putnam $104,000, meaning that out of the Section 1 Athletic Association, our county generates the lowest median household income comparable to Section 9, where you'll see that under us would be Orange County at $79,000, Ulster at $69,000, and Sullivan at $57,000, meaning that would put us at the top of the median household income rate that we have here. Anthony, do you have a question?
Yeah. Can you explain why? Yeah, I mean, I'm having a problem with this slide here. Yep. Median income, why is it relevant? I'm still not understa... I mean, you said here, "The benefits is to access offseason training, private training." And are you saying that... I mean, what... If, I mean, the county rate wouldn't change whether we're nine or one, right? So...
Correct.
The private training not available if we stay with Section 1?
So this comparison is to compare us to the other counties within the section. So basically, Rockland, Westchester, and Putnam County, who are able to generate more income per household, are more likely to be able to fund training and private offseason workouts, to have better access to facilities because of the tax bracket. You have a lot of schools that are around in lower Westchester, have turf softball fields, turf baseball fields, and two football fields per campus. The rate of training institutions and the amount of training that these people can receive because of the money that's generated in that area will automatically give an athlete better opportunity in those counties. So while it wouldn't hinder us from being able to do so, it's bringing us on a better, more level playing field to a county that has the same or a similar median household income that we have.
I still don't understand. I use... So regardless of what our median in-house income is, I mean, we'll provide. So what is... Are you saying that Rockland has more, we're competing against folks that have, that are investing more into their facilities and stuff, and therefore can have the edge over us? Is that what you're saying?
It could be. The way that I'm looking at this is the amount of opportunity and the resources that people would have to provide the better training to the athletes in these counties. Now, while we may not be, have that same amount, we still have the right to do so. And I do know people that are able to do that, but it's an overall comparison to the other counties that we'd be with, grouped with, with Section 9.
Anthony, what he's referring to is like travel sports. So like, not school programs, but travel sport opportunities where kids could get the offseason workouts out of better, and they pay to play.
Okay.
Correct.
Play regardless of their... We're Section 1, Section 9, though, right?
There's things like, Anthony, there's a lot of, I mean, I don't know if your kids played sports, if your girls played sports, but there's lots of... If you're in a wealthier area and your families have more resources, they can pay for private coaches. They can pay for, you know, time with, for really expensive camps. I mean, if you're on football, you could go exclusively to a passing and receiving camp just to get better at your position. You know, those are all things that, over time, that investment can have this compounding impact on the competitiveness of students that, regardless of ability, just gives them more of an edge and kind of, you know, you can't keep putting your whole heart in and playing against teams that are just getting so much more invested in them and not have it have a long-term impact of feeling like, you know, that there's an unfairness there.
Okay. I think I understand. Thank you.
I think when, you know, when John presented this to Matt, he really... One thing that was very apparent to me was that it, I think his goal is really to grow the program, grow more people. In general, John's talked about his goal being, you know, for any student that leaves Beacon to have a, you know, lifelong fitness plan and growing the program. It's no fun to lose all the time. So, you know, if this puts students in a better position to win some gains so that they feel more invested in it, I think that's sort of what you're getting at, John. Does that... I don't want to put words in your mouth, but...
No, I mean, I'm the first to admit that it is difficult to get more students involved if you don't have a winning program. You know, nobody wants to go out and lose. Nobody wants to go out and face competition that's going to demoralize them. And in my opinion, that's where we are lacking with our enrollment. I mean, it's hard, and I mean, and you can have coaches, and we have some absolutely wonderful coaches putting in time and effort in the offseason, but when the product isn't there of success, it's very hard to continue to recruit at that level. Now, that is something that we are continuously working on, think we're trying different things and doing different things. But as I keep mentioning, just statistically, instead of having to compete with 27 teams for a section championship, when you're down to nine, you know that any given year, you have the opportunity to at least make the... I mean, we have a lot of times, we're not even making postseason play. So we're not even playing the first round of it, let alone making it to the section finals. So instead of having to pay, play three, four, or five rounds to make the section final, you go to Section 9, it can be two or three rounds. We can be in a semifinal game quicker. And ultimately, it comes down to the opportunity that we're giving to our kids. How are they feeling after this season? And ultimately, it comes down to the opportunity that we're giving to our kids. How are they feeling after this season? Were they satisfied? Were were they excited? They got to play postseason play, we got to light up the turf, we got to. Do a lot of fun things and have some special events and it was more than just a Saturday morning game. It was a special game, it was a special opportunity. And that, in my opinion, is how we are going to remedy the problem of recruiting more athletes uh for Beacon Athletics.
Thank you. That makes it more clear.
Not a problem. Next slide, Mike. Uh so throughout this process, uh I did want to make sure that our coaches were included. Especially with their opinions, we have a lot of coaches, veteran coaches here that have been in Beacon a long time and Beacon has never uh played in any other section than section one. So I did feel it was extremely important to to take the feedback that our coaches gave and um I I I'm I'm very. Um, I don't know, I guess the word is uh grateful that a lot of our coaches had the same mentality and feeling that I did. Whereas if we had the opportunity to put ourselves in a better position to be successful. We should exercise that opportunity. So um I don't need to read every single one, but basically I've asked all of our. Coaches to make a statement about how they feel about this and you'll see that there is no. Uh negative feedback regarding this is a bad decision or this will be bad for kids or this is a bad move. What it came down to was basically nostalgia. And uh being comfortable and knowing the other coaches at other schools that we compete with. Um, that being said, everybody recognizes that while we we may be comfortable as coaches in a program, we may be used to way. Uh it the section one runs and and our opponents. Is that still the right thing that we should be doing for kids? And should we as coaches and 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 adults really look at how we can make the program better? So I'm I'm very pleased to say, everybody was extremely on board with the decision. Mike, you can go to the next page, you could take it upon yourself to read the exact comments from our coaches. Uh Jim Henry, one, you know, which is our most prominent uh uh sectional winner in the last thirty years. Thinks that going to section nine i- i- is an absolute brilliant idea because they have a lot of focus on modified level students and track and field. Uh Ron Tompkins feels that we'd be more better suited to compete in section nine wrestling. Mike Carafano with softball, uh go to the next side, please, uh Mike. Hugo Alzak, if girls are, you'll see, since I moved to class A in two thousand and five, our team has never made it past the first round of sixteen teams. Craig Seaman, who um agrees that section nine would be a wonderful fit for our program entirely, you know, also. Looks at his program uh and realized that he could compete in section one athletics because he's established such a high end program. That being said, as we mentioned earlier, we've never won a section championship in boys soccer. So boys and girls bowling, uh go to the next slide, uh Mike, please. Bobby Atwell with baseball, Brian Lang with girls lacrosse, which is one of our newest program and one of our struggling programs right now. It's just, it's a collective uh feeling that we feel as a program that we could be doing better. And we could set ourselves up for better success. Next slide, Mike. So here would be an example, just to break it down a little bit more of the leagues. And uh what I've done is I calculated by minute. So if you look on the left hand side, section one, this is our current league alignment and basically. Uh they call the current league alignment because your basic soccer, basketball, baseball, softball would uh be in this type of league. And our league alignment would be Poughkeepsie Peak Skill, Our Ladies of Lords and Hendrick Hudson High School. An example of a league that we could be put in in section nine, which has two different league structures. Would be, as you see on the right, Washingtonville, Cornwall, Monticello, Menasink, Goshen and Port Jervis. Now, you see on the right, obviously, the one that sticks out would be Monticello being about an hour away and Port Jervis. Well, I've gone a little bit further and if you look back on the left, all of the schools that are in red are over forty minutes to travel. So if you also notice, all of those schools in the red are typically our A schools that we match up against. So two years ago, for instance, our fir- first football game was Pello, took an hour and forty five minutes to drive down there onto a Friday night. You look at schools like Yonkers, Eastchester, Sleepy Hollow, Harrison. All of these schools are over forty minutes, fifty minutes of time and they are typically our normal schedule when it comes down to what we're given in section one. Now, if you compare it to section nine, while you do have a Monticello and Port Jervis thrown in there. You'll see that a majority of the schools otherwise Valley Central, Walk Hill, Highland, Burke, uh O'Neil. Are typically less than forty minutes time of travel. Take into account the traffic situation going into Orange County, Ulster County compared to lower Westchester and Rockland County. You can argue that it would make a difference. So it's not, once again, breaking the bank when it comes down to making this decision just over travel. But you can see it's quite comparable. Another thing about moving to section nine would be we still have the opportunity to compete against section one schools in crossover games. So if our coach wants, we can schedule a Friday night game against Our Lady of Lords. We can go to Hen Hood and play a contest, Peak Skill, Poughkeepsie, whoever we want. We still have the opportunity to play them, however, they wouldn't be in our basic league alignment, we wouldn't be competing against them for a section championship. So for instance, last year we played NFA in basketball. Right across the river, easy, that was a section nine versus section one, it didn't count towards our uh postseason status. But you do have the opportu- opportunity to play these schools. So even if we did make a change. We can still hold a type of rivalry if you think or consider Lords or Poughkeepsie or Hen or whatever our closest school has rival. We still have the opportunity to do that. Go ahead, next slide, Mike. So a couple of concerns from our coaches, one was from Dave Riley and and once, as I mentioned before, um. Uh a very long tenure tennis coach, wonderful, uh absolutely wonderful coach that we have that that continues to uh, you know, make. Big differences in regards to our students and and you know, and their success. And his feeling was, once again, the nostalgia was Beacon has always been a section one school. Uh, do we want to make this jump? Um, you know, i- is it the right move? Is it the right decision? And ultimately, when a conversation with Coach Riley, who I have the utmost respect for, it came down to. Will it give you a better si- uh chance of success and will it be a better chance for your athletes to compete in postseason play? And ultimately, he agreed, uh which was great because we're really looking into our programs as a whole. Craig Seaman. Uh, boys soccer is at a high level, he's fine competing, Craig Seaman. You know, one reason why I admire him is he doesn't want to play the schools that are closest or the schools that are the small. He wants to play the absolute best that New York State has to offer. Uh which hence why his program is is accelerating right now. So Craig Seaman is comfortable playing in section one because he's fine with playing the best and competing. He also understands that as a whole, this would be beneficial for Beacon as a complete athletic program. And then finally, Scott Timpano, the rivalries. Um, being able to play the teams that we've played in the last twenty, thirty, forty, fifty, sixty years. But as I mentioned, I feel that we can still schedule these games if they're of importance to a particular program, if they have that set rival. If we're gonna do our tunnel game versus Hal Dane, we can still do so, it just wouldn't be aligned in our actual league. Next slide, Mike. And finally, just some conclusions here. So moving to section nine would statistically increase our chances of competing in postseason play. Moving to section nine would make us the county with the highest median household income. Moving to section nine would save us money and moving to section nine would keep our travel primarily based in Duchess, Orange and Ulster County. Every coach that we have in Beacon agrees that moving to section nine would make us more competitive. And would ultimately increase our opportunity for postseason play. So basically, in a conclusion, if you were to ask me what would be the best place for our athletes to compete with. I would agree that section nine would be the best to compete with. Now, the process goes as such, uh we're actually past deadline to apply. But considering COVID, section nine is willing to make exceptions in regard to accepting us for this upcoming school year. I've had conversations with them and basically what section nine looks for is board approval uh in order for us to do this. So while I'm not looking for a board vote or approval tonight, that's something eventually down the road that you can discuss or we can answer. More questions or if you need more information, uh we can ult- ultimately go into that. But that's basically the process. I'm I'm very happy that uh you were able to give me the time tonight. I- i- this is something that I feel can be drastic for our programs at Beacon. Um, I keep asking myself, you know, the the extra time effort and work. I- i- is it worth it to make our our programs better and and you're darn right it is. And I I wouldn't be happy with myself if I wasn't at least presenting something or a change that I thought would be beneficial. Uh to our student athletes as a whole. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that anybody would have.
I just want to then, I just want to jump in and just talk about the next step. Um, we uh, since this is something uh that does require action. And it's also something that we don't want to just have uh be in a board meeting. Um, John and I will work on uh just making sure the community is aware of this potential change. So uh for sure, we'll put an email out to everyone and we'll post on the website and we'll post uh this uh. Presentation, um, you know, the part of the board, that's this presentation for people to look at. And just uh allow people to uh both email the board and us if they have thoughts or comments about the change too. So we can see uh what people are thinking.
And John, there was one thing you didn't mention um that um in terms of your ideas for expanding the program like with crew and things like that. You did ask section one about that and they declined to allow that to happen, right? So certain, you you actually cannot expand the program in in the ways, in some of the ways that you've um expressed interest in. Currently with our current configuration.
So um when you want to merge or adopt an additional program, there is a process where um your your basic league needs to vote. They have to have a second and it comes to an ultimate vote. In the past, we've been denied a swim merger. With Spack and Kill, um which you can argue if it helped hurt, uh you know, hindered our program or not. But it was certainly a nice opportunity to make us more competitive that we weren't able to exercise. Um, so while minimally uh crew, now crew, I haven't tried to uh look into an official merger with crew because we have. Uh some club opportunities to do so. So after the the swim merger was denied and. I was learning a little bit more of how section one, you know, felt about those things. That's why I wanted to go to the the um the club route initially.
Um, John, I have, I, as a parent of two student athletes, I I really love this plan. I do have three questions. Um, can you just tell us in simple terms, what is the criteria for section one versus section nine? Is it student population or like, how does, like, how does that get decided in the first place?
Um, basically, it's a membership. It's a membership that you're a part of that they vote on you. So the board resolution is the ultimate way that the um the section will vote to accept you. So we could very well go through this process and section nine could vote us out. And not allow us into their membership. Now, we we automatically have a membership in the section one, but that's the process.
Okay, um, can you tell me, are are the section nine schools that we would be playing, are those schools consistently running freshman programs as well as JV and varsity?
Some do, some don't. I believe there's a higher number in section one when it comes down to freshman programs as well. But you do have, like I mentioned, you do have the opportunity to continue to compete against section one schools if you choose that route.
Okay, and then can you tell us, um, is there an advantage to moving? By moving to section nine, is there an advantage for hopeful collegiate athletes? And if so, what what are the advantages for kids who hope to play uh at the college level?
Well, you can certainly argue, you know, what an advantage is. I mean, is it advantage making the section championship game? Or is it advantage competing against such a strong section that they're able to weed out the really good athletes without them making the championship? So I mean, when I graduate, I went to Marlboro High School, which was a class B section nine school and I graduated with four of us who played college baseball out of the same class, let alone everything else. There's certainly advantages and if you start to look at places like Cornwall, places like NFA, Marlboro, Highland, uh uh Middletown, you know. You certainly are able to get that expo- in my opinion, you're able to get that exposure regardless of where you go, as long as you're competing well. So I would not consider that as a disadvantage. The one argument you could make is that section one schools are so strong that it's making them stronger. Athletes and they want to take athletes from that area. Now, that being said, should our concern or should my focus be on getting more kids to college, which is great? Or the overall student experience to compete in more postseason play? So you kind of got a vari- your way.
Right.
The options there. But me being a section nine product and playing college ball. You know, it it wasn't, and I'm not bragging about myself, Mr. Demato, I saw your style. But uh, you know, I I feel like, you know, there's there's advantages each way.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question, John. Uh so um, I don't know how many sections are actually in this, in in the universe here. And and one to nine, I guess there's a two to eight, two sections today, and I know Anthony White's laughing at me, but. So my basic question is like, like, I guess nine, you pick nine because all most of the schools in the area are in nine or. How'd you not decide two, three, four, five, six, seven or eight either?
Proximity. So we're either looking at one Westchester, then you're looking at in Long Island. Then you're looking at nine, which is uh goes out to Sullivan County, then pass there, we'd be going into Bigum- uh Binghamton County. Or we would be going up past Albany for the next sections.
Thank you.
Typically set by region, Anthony. There's twelve sections, so it's by region.
Well, we're in region five, right?
Public hearing that I think there's people who are deeply involved in this world that will know and there's people who don't. So I appreciate that you're asking a question that anybody in the public might have because. They might wonder the same thing, how do you pick nine over one?
Duchess, Duchess is the county in the region that's uh about half the districts in Duchess are section one and the other half are section nine. So John, I may be wrong, but I think we're the one county that's kind of divided between sections.
Yes, there are others, but it it seems like there's quite a. Location disconnect. Yeah, you you know, you have Arlington High School that's going to the New York City Armory.
Are there any other questions for John right now? Um, you know, as you said, this isn't something we would approve right now. It'd be great to to hear how a town hall goes and hear how the public is feeling about it. But I think this is a great starting, getting the board informed on what this would mean.
I I grew up playing in section nine and um. You know, I found it to be pretty competitive and then if you had a really good year, you would move into. You know, each, like depending on the sport, you could move into sort of things for championships or. I don't even know if they still have the Empire State Building games, but you you could go to Empire State Games or it doesn't limit you in terms of. Um, your options to excel. My brother played college football, he went to Monroe Woodbury, there's definitely pathways forward. So I think that it's something that I know from playing tennis that. Um, we would play NIAC or a couple of other teams in section one and, you know, it was a drag to go to places where. The facilities were like ten times better and um. You, and there are lots of kids who are playing in private clubs and had access to tennis pros and. You would just feel kind of less than sometimes and I think it was, that feeling only happened. A couple of times a season, but I I think that it's um. You know, it has nothing to do with your capabilities or who you are or anything like that, but the sort of repeated exposure, I think. Um, gives you sort of a, at least the athlete, like this unfair sense of um being less than. When it's better to sort of compete on an equal playing field.
Now, Chris, and I think a lot of our coaches echo that statement.
Any other questions?
I think it's a very good report. I appreciate John putting the effort in to get us all that data. Let's run it up the flagpole and see what people think.
Now, this was an excellent presentation, I have to say. I really appreciated all the perspectives you offered, the level of detail. You kind of had me in the second slide, so I didn't need all of them, but I think it was really thorough and for anybody who has questions, it really provides. All of the analysis, which is just, you know, really fantastic.
Yeah, the the feedback slides actually uh helped me a lot to make a decision.
Yeah, I agree. Thanks, John. It was, this was very good. Thank you.
Thank you and thank our coaches for uh really being open to the idea and and giving me honest feedback. That was extremely helpful. Thank you all.
Thanks, John. Well, we'll we'll be in touch soon. Um, okay, so let's move on to our facilities and operations budget given by Anthony Demato, our director of facilities.
Good evening, everyone. Mike, if you could pull that up, I'd appreciate it. Hope everyone's. Hanging in there on another snowy evening. Um, this is gonna look pretty familiar to most. Um, by all means, if you have any questions throughout, uh feel free to interrupt. There certainly certainly will be opportunities to have uh ask questions at the end, but um absolutely interrupt if uh if you'd like. There certainly, certainly will be opportunities to have, uh, ask questions at the end, but absolutely interrupt if, if you'd like. So let's get to it. Next slide. So here in review, start off, once again, we have some playground improvements. We removed or replaced certified playground mulch at Glennum and South Avenue this year up to New York State and most importantly nicer codes. This you'll see is a reoccurring theme. What happens is, is we have to have a certain amount of a certified playground mulch in our playgrounds for the safety of the children. And throughout the year, we will try to till up this mulch to keep it light and fluffy. But over time, it does decompose. So eventually we do have to remove it all and replace it. So this is why we continue to see this and why we need to get mulch every year. Some site work improvements. We have the installation of the permanent grandstands and the press box along with the flagpole as well at the turf field behind the high school. We've also moved those temporary structures to other locations for use behind the high school as well. One major aesthetic function, aesthetic and function upgrade. We, at the high school gym, we sanded down to the wood, the gym floor, which was in dire need of it. We repainted all the lines, painted the new logo on the floor and refinished it. Also, the walls were, the original paint was in really rough shape. So we gave it some paint and it looks fantastic. There'll be a picture of it on a few slides down. The one major equipment purchase was a new dump truck this year. We just received it a couple of days ago and we're just waiting to get it registered and on the road. So we can use it for hopefully not too much more snow coming. Next slide please. Thanks, Mike. So we have a bunch of different projects that continue to go on, some that kind of jumped up at us when we weren't ready for them, but got through them. To start off, the 1920 Capitol project, there were some ongoing things that we needed to finish up there. So we continued work and coordination with the various aspects of the project. That included GC work, for example, casework at the Ramback Middle School Science Lab, HVAC work, unit ventilators, electrical and site work. Like I mentioned, the grandstands, press box and the power to them. High school HVAC and chiller plant project. This is funded by the insurance reserve. So we had to reconfigure the originally installed air handling units that were installed improperly. We had to take them apart and install them correctly. And we are on the cusp of beginning the repiping of the chiller plant to appropriately allow for better water flow to the peripheries of the building for better dehumidification and better cooling. The Smart School Project, continued collaboration with Tetra Tech and day automation for security camera and door access upgrades. We are limping, limping along here with our, our system right now. The good news is, is that we will be starting this project very soon. It's just around the corner. There's some things that we need to still do, but we're looking good there. And here is the one that kind of jumped up at us. I believe the storm happened to be, I think it was April 13th. So we had a storm rip through a beacon that did some serious damage to the high school, the high school roof. And in turn, the water got in the building. So we replaced about three quarters of the roof. We had a repair water damage in the B wing, in the guidance office and some other areas affected by the storm. That was all done through insurance. Uh, next slide, Mike, thanks. Here we have a couple of pictures. We all like pictures. These are the new grandstands in the back of the high school with, along the turf field. It's a pretty cool shot of the crane lifting and the press box and also the new flagpole back in the corner there. And here is a shot of the gym, the high school gym with the new floor and paint. Yeah, it looks great. Uh, next slide. Okay, COVID costs. So of course there were costs caused by COVID. So here's a quick rundown of what some of the costs are. Or were masks, gloves and other PPE, of course, was a large sum. Different types of cleaning solution, disinfectants, hand sanitizer. Bio shield was also in that cleaning solution category. Tabletop and pull down sneeze guard for protections, protection. Thermal imaging kiosks, which we put at the entrances of the, of all the buildings. Of course, handheld touchless thermometers. MERV 13 filters district wide, we replaced and we put them in all our air handling units and our unit ventilators. Directional arrows and decals for social distancing. Clorox 360 machines, just some additional disinfectant, disinfecting tools. And of course, the tent rentals, which you saw outside most of our schools, if not all of them, to give outdoor learning spaces to the students. Next slide. Future considerations. So we are still looking to purchase a skid steer for larger in-house site work and snow removal. Definitely could have used that this year for the snow. New floor machines for school cleaning, auto scrubbers, strippers, buffers. Most of them are really getting up there in age or doing a lot of repair work to them. And we do need some new, uh, new equipment there. We are still looking to rekey the entire district. The locking system and keys are quite old, again antiquated. And we're looking to update that system for security purposes. Next slide. So here you'll see the line item for the budgets. This is 1620. Most everything is flat here. Nothing has really changed except the typical increase in salaries. Uh, next slide. And the operations budget mostly flat as well. Again, just an increase in salaries and you will notice the equipment line has, has gone up a bit this year. Okay, next slide.
Anthony, is the equipment line up because of the, of the skid steer or what, what's the?
Yeah, especially the skid steer. It is, it, it is an expensive piece of equipment, one that will certainly pay for itself over time. And what I think in, in my team thinks would be really helpful to have and a necessity. So that's ultimately the, the increase there.
Are you projecting of, can you go back to the other slide? Are you projecting a flat cost other than for equipment, but for supplies? There's also a jump in contractual. Is that the equipment and supplies, are we projecting based on the assumption that we'll need to continue COVID costs?
Emery, could you jump in on that projection?
Sure, sure. Um, so we have historically left the supply line and the contractual line, um, flat. We, we, there were things that we put on the back burner that we did not purchase this year because of COVID. We included the COVID costs in this presentation specifically because those are the budget codes that we use to pay for all of the COVID. But we did, you know, there are things that we did not purchase. The contractual amount is increased by the rekeying. So if you remember, if you go back to the slides from last year, the skid steer was in there. The rekeying was in there and then COVID happened. And we just basically told Anthony that those were not going to happen and that we needed it. We need the equipment line to buy the kiosks. You know, the UV machines, everything that was over a certain dollar amount had to go into equipment. So we're trying again to put them back in. They're still in need, but because of the COVID costs, we did not purchase those things last year.
So those are in the, the COVID costs are in the presentation, but because they're in the same budget code, but they're not reflected in this budget. Because that was, if we go back, that was like 200 something thousand. And the, the difference here is seven, is 70,000.
We didn't spend, Kristen, we didn't spend in addition for the COVID. We used the budget area that we had. So there were things that we just did not purchase in 1620 and 1621.
Okay. The key things we didn't purchase were the skid steer and doing the rekeying. Are there other things that we didn't purchase?
There was a lot of materials that we did not purchase. There were projects that we put on the back burner that we did not do because we needed to spend the money for COVID. So, um, again, I just want to go a little bit further. We did get federal stimulus money to pay for our COVID costs. Unfortunately, Governor Como took that money off of the state aid. So it wasn't in addition to, it was instead of. So we, we basically used, that was a revenue source to pay for it. But we had to use our current budget code areas to actually purchase COVID. So things that.
I just don't understand. So it zeroed, because I, I, so it zeroed out the COVID costs. That state aid or that, that stimulus money canceled out what we spent on COVID.
But we also didn't get that amount of money from state aid. That was deducted from our state aid. So that was the federal stimulus money was a revenue source. So Governor Como took it away from us. Any federal stimulus money we got, we got less than state aid.
Okay, I, I'm just trying to understand. So this only goes up 70,000, but it sounds like there are things that we chose not to do last year and we redirected towards COVID money. But it's planning forward. How are we going to pay for ongoing COVID expenses? Cause we won't need the filters and things like that, but we'll still need a good bit of the supplies that are on that list. Are there, is budget codes coming out of facilities or are we finding money elsewhere for that?
No, they will have to come out of facilities money. So there isn't a way. So we do have a lot of masks leftover. We do have PPE that's leftover so that we can use that. The, the MERV filters will have to be bought again because they're, they're changed on a quarterly basis. We are also looking at buying HEPA filters going forward, just as we're transitioning back to school. So we're going to use the current money there. So basically when Anthony and I discussed doing his budget, you know, I'm, I'm once, and you're going to see this overall, the department budgets are, are pretty much flat except for salaries. And the only exception to that for this area would be things that he had wanted, that we had needed last year that we didn't purchase.
So the $70,000 increase is for the skid steer and for rekeying?
Correct.
Anything else?
Nope, that's it.
Okay, so that's the $70,000 cost. And then we still have this ongoing, these ongoing costs related to COVID and.
But I don't believe that we won't spend as much money on COVID because we don't have to buy the UV machines. We don't have to buy the extra Clorox machines. We don't have to buy the kiosks. Those were big ticket items.
Okay, can we go back to that slide just quickly to see, like, just to understand? So how much do we think that we'll need to spend? You know.
The MERV 13 filters will be a reoccurring expenditure because we need to continue to change those on a quarterly basis.
Masks and gloves, we're going to need that.
Mask and gloves, but not to that extent, to not, you know, because we did buy cloth masks too for everyone. We did buy disposable masks, which we do have a lot of, which we, you know, we will start using if we need to. The bio shield will need to be a continuing expense.
Fair amount, some of the stuff we do have a fair amount left over. You know, there, some, at one point when we purchased it, we didn't know what and when we'd be able to get more, given the demand. So we did a good job of, of procuring what it is that we needed to. Things like the cleaning solution, our, our regular cleaner is a, is a disinfectant. So that's something that we would have to purchase regularly anyway, coming out of our supply code. So that's something that kind of, you know, works its way out as well. So there are, there are a lot of things in there that we, we wouldn't have to, to spend the money on.
Yeah, and I'm sure there is a great job done in sourcing. It's really not about the job or not the job. This isn't a criticism. This is literally just trying to understand the money, the budget. So how we're planning for, are we talking about like half the cost with, related to PP? Like, will it be a $30,000 ticket item? Are we talking about doing tents again? Cause that's significant ticket item. It, it just will help especially for budgeting next year to know. It, it's like hard, I get that this was separate and that we were made whole on it, even though it didn't go to state aid. But just how we're planning forward and how it affects the budget for facilities would just be helpful to understand like what we're projecting for this.
I, I'm just going to jump in quickly with, I, um, I think some of this is going to have to be in terms of the COVID costs at a meeting a little bit down the road. Just because we're, we're still kind of sorting through what we need to do to bring everyone fully back. It seems like there's, I don't want to say debate. I don't know if debate is the right word, but there's a lot of conversation about, uh, barriers, you know, like little desk barriers as a way to bring kids in more. I think there's a lot of different opinions about it. I'm not going to get into a deep thing about that. But I know some districts are purchasing them right now. So, you know, as like a sort of a, a way based on the NYDOH guidelines from last summer as a way to bring kids in more often. The CDC guidelines didn't get deeply into air filtration. I guess their footnotes did, but they didn't have it in the direct text. I'm more of a person that I think air filtration is probably, makes more sense as a way to go to put our money into than, than desk shields. However, I'm going to need either the Duchess DOH or the NYDOH to sign off, to sign off on like us putting more money into air filtration than, uh, than the shields. I think a lot of people sort of see through, um, not, well, I guess literally see through the shields. But I think people sort of see the shields as, as maybe not the best way to keep everybody breathing, you know, breathing good air. So I think one of the reasons we're struggling with this right now is the CDC guidelines just came out. Duchess just put their stamp on the CDC guidelines at 5:30 tonight. So there's, there's parts of this that we just haven't figured out. So I, I think, I think, I think we're going to have to, I think we're going to have to.
Is the bio shield, the shields you're talking about, is that 7,000?
No, bio shield, bio shield is a, bio shield is a cleaning, bio shield is a cleaning product you put on desks and surfaces. And it, it, it prevents the microbial growth for some length of time. So that bio shield is not a shield. It's like a brand name of a cleaning thing.
I'm, I'm not, I'm really not trying to put anybody on the spot. I just think masks and gloves, we're still probably going to need. I'm assuming cleaning solution. I'm just wondering about like what we think these line items are going to cost going forward and how we're planning for them, since there are things on here that look like they're ongoing. And then if we, we don't have to discuss it now related to the budget because we still have to put together the budget and finalize it. It's just something I want to understand about what percentage of this.
Yeah.
We're thinking about going forward.
I'm not, I, I'm not feeling put on the spot. I'm just, I guess what I'm saying with COVID costs is I think that we still have a lot of big question marks just because some of the stuff is just coming out about. I mean, honestly, I think.
It'd be great to see if people want to use the tents because that was a big expense. I don't know the extent it was used. So it's, it's helpful to know for our budget if, you know.
Right, we, we, we're going to, we'll be in conversation with the principals, each principal about how much they were used. I mean, I have a lot of sort of me eyeballing it. Some were used a lot more than others. Do we still do it and just encourage more usage of them? Uh, I mean, one thought I had is, is we have more students back. Whether it's this spring or next fall, are, are people going to want to use the, you know, outdoor spaces more? Because there's more students in the hybrid model where there's, you know, pretty limited numbers of students in each classroom. Teachers felt, uh, teachers probably felt pretty good about, you know, who's not too, but the number of kids in their class. They didn't feel the urge to go outside all the time. If you have a larger number, do you want to go outside? I mean, th- this is, uh, and doing the COVID sort of preparation is like, kind of a never ending journey of things slightly shifting and changing. And also just trying to figure out the best way to prepare based on, you know, some of the guidance. And, and, and honestly, it always falls down to us making the final call, which is probably a good thing. But I think with the COVID costs, I think we probably need to come back a little bit later because we're still sorting through some of the guidance that just came out. That's my short version. Sorry, I went on for so long.
Yeah, all right, that makes sense.
I have a question for Anthony with the MERV 13.
Uh, with the MIRF thirteen filters, I assume that, um, that we have had filters in every one of those units before and that we routinely replace them on some kind of schedule. But it may be that these are more expensive, uh, filters. Could you address that, uh, please?
Yeah, they certainly are a little bit more, um, expensive, um, and given the demand for them, the material themselves that were harder. Quite difficult to get, but we, we pulled it off. Um, so it is, uh, a bit more expensive. Actual material that is used is just, it's a tighter mesh. It, it catches more particles. Um, you know, there, there could be some negative effects associated with it, but those are all, uh, effects that we're, we're willing to, to deal with, uh, for, you know, uh, additional, uh, protection. So.
Okay. I think the, uh, one of the negative effects is that it creates a higher pressure level that can strain the fans and the air handlers that may wear out prematurely. Have we had any signs of this so far?
So, so luckily, uh, not yet. We also had, uh, an engineer come in and take a look at some of our more suspect units to make sure that they would be able to handle it. Um, and, and for the most part, they felt that we should be okay. And so far, so good. I don't think there's, um, any additional than usual, uh, wear on any of the equipment as of yet.
Very good.
And so back to the presentation, uh, so down the road, um, a- as is always, we always try to identify immediate and non-immediate facility issues, which we can resolve through the general fund. Um, and the building condition survey, which was just, uh, done and completed by, uh, Tetra Tech. Um, we're going to use these findings from the BCS along with other educational needs, um, for the district, uh, working together with facilities committee, uh, to put together a full, uh, bond vote. And that's it. Any, any additional questions to anything that we discussed or anything new?
There any been, has there been a need to, I know sometimes we get services through BOSI's and sometimes we can't. And sometimes BOSI's actually, um, will procure services if they have enough school districts to have interest. As, as you, have you found any examples of that? Uh, need that you, um, to go to BOSI's and say, hey, I think myself and probably others in the other districts may need help.
Is there anything in particular you're speaking to or just generally, or it's just on a whole?
Uh, well, I mean, I think the, 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 um, building survey, I think is something that, that you went through. But I don't know. That was some, that was Tetra Tech doing themselves.
The building co- a condition survey is attached to, um, what could possibly be an upcoming capital project, um, if it passes, uh, the Bongo. So, um, that will be aidable if it does, if it is. Um, but certain services that we might use, uh, I could give you an example. Um, this year, our triennial, uh, asbestos inspection is up. Um, it's something that we are working together with, uh, BOSI's with, um, to get aid on through Quest Diagnostics, putting it together. So, um, so that's just an example of how we might use BOSI's, uh, BOSI's services, uh, to help the district financially.
But I mean, I, I, I mean, I, I don't know too much about the net zero building guidance from the energy department, but I know, but I heard that Tompkins Seneca BOSI's has services for that, for that, uh, for that type of, uh, need. So I don't know if that's something that Duchess also has.
We could re- we could research it and see, but we would have to do a cross contract with them, um, through Duchess BOSI's. Um, also Anthony, um, I reuse Duchess BOSI's for our elevator inspection and we also, um, but Duchess BOSI's is really good with doing bidding for materials and supplies, um, as well as the state contracts. So that's how we, we utilize BOSI's as well.
Okay. Um, if there's no-
I, I have one question. I mean, do we, had, do we encourage significant overtime costs, um, this year for COVID? And do we expect that to be ongoing for next year? Are we project, projecting for that? For extra cleaning and things like that? Or will we be able to do a lot of it within regular workday?
I think for the most part, um, uh, most of it was able to be done, uh, during regular workday. I think there were, uh, a few instances where, you know, OT, uh, may have, uh, been used for COVID purposes, but it wasn't, um, an extreme amount of, uh, time, I don't believe.
Most of our overtime, um, is for snow removal. Cause I happened to look at it today because I wanted to make sure. Um, so yeah, and Kristen, remember last year we added, um, custodial workers to the four elementary schools during the day. So that we could avoid overtime, but we also needed to have, you know, because we were going to have the lunch in the classrooms and we wanted to make sure that the buildings were in good condition all day while there are children and staff in the buildings.
Okay.
Are there any other questions for Anthony? Okay. Thank you so much, Anthony.
You're welcome. Thanks, everyone.
Thanks. Great presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, okay. Can I have a motion to adjourn to executive session? To review the employment history of particular individuals and seek legal advice from the school attorney to discuss collective bargaining with the CSEA nurses unit.
Anthony, so moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Flora, comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I'm in favor. Passes eight to zero. The board expects to return within a half hour. Thank you. Okay. Looks like everybody's back. Um, thanks for your patience. We, um, let's see, what do we have next? Reviewing the agenda, there are no, um, no changes or corrections to the agenda. Next we have school and student presentations. Are there any school or student presentations? Mike, are you doing the chat?
Uh, we have one, Erin.
Oh, great.
Hello. I wanted to, um, this is Erin Junta, um, president of the Sergeant PTO. Um, just wanted to say it was great to hear, um, uh, from Anthony D'Amato about the, um, the budget for next year. Um, the PTO would like to see if we could, or see if there will be a copy of the building's condition survey available to the public. I know the Sergeant, uh, PTO would love to see what, um, the status update is on the state of the Sergeant building and what was looked at, um, from the condition survey, especially of a concern to us is our library, which, um, could need a little bit of, um, some help, um, the cafeteria and the auditorium. So if that, um, building condition survey can be shared or made public, we would appreciate knowing where we could find that link. So thank you for that. Um, also regarding, um, facilities, um, the Sergeant playground, uh, finally got two swings that had been missing from our equipment, uh, playground equipment, uh, installed in fall nine, uh, two thousand nineteen. Um, we are still missing the, uh, thick mats underneath those swings that helps, um, keep the mulch in place and prevents those large mulch gullies from the kids' feet. So, um, we had mentioned about that two years ago, um, February, I'm sorry, in, uh, fall of two thousand nineteen. So we'd like to see if the budget can account for two of those nice thick mats for our playground. Also, I'm not sure if, again, in the, um, the facilities budget, the exteriors of the buildings, like, uh, the pathways, the pavement walkways were looked at. Um, there's been crumbling pavement, uh, from, uh, outside of Sergeant, uh, the exterior steps from the inside of the building that goes down to the playground, the pavement at the bottom there, which is the walkway from the cafeteria to the, um, the, the playground. Um, that's kind of crumbling, um, and it's a, a tripping hazard. And, uh, that should definitely be repaired. So I'd like to make that request, um, and let you guys know about that. So, um, on other news from the Sergeant PTO, we, we've been working on an initiative for the past month to, um, honor uh, the Sergeant PTO's commitment to, uh, the Black Lives Matter, um, anti racism, um, initiative that, uh, we, we talked about over the summer about, um, trying to put our money where our mouth is and do some work to, um, s- make sure that inclusivity, um, is not overlooked in our schools and everyday things that, uh, we, most of us take for granted. So one of the things that we're looking at is, um, is crayons and how crayons can accurately represent, um, your skin if you don't see that color in a crayon box. So the PTO is working on, um, giving, um, every single child at Sergeant a box of, uh, twenty-four, uh, colors of the world crayons, along with that, um, for free. Along with that, we are working to put a book in each of the children's hands for free, um, regarding that face, um, uh, grant that I told you guys about, uh, a couple of weeks ago. So, um, we're going to be sending home a copy of, if you were a kid during the civil rights movement, to all kids in grades three through five. We're going to, that book outlines landmark events and the fight for civil rights. Um, we're also going to be giving grades, um, one and two children a copy of the story of Ruby Bridges. And we're going to be giving children in grades pre-K and kindergarten, the picture book, My People, which uses, uh, photographs to illustrate a poem by Langston Hughes. So it's our hope that these small tools will, uh, start a deeper discussion about the importance of representation, inclusivity and anti racism work in schools and not just during Black History Month in February, but through every single week, uh, and every single day that school is in session. That's all I've got to say. Thank you.
I have a question.
Yeah.
It's a question from Marie. Um, so th- the, the items that Erin listed, how does that get considered in the budget, on our budget process?
To be honest with you, I mean, I don't know the particulars of it. I have already reached out, um, on an email to find out. So I noted everything that she mentioned and we'll, um, find out where we are with it. I, I'm not as familiar with it, Erin. I'm sorry, um, but I'll look into it for you.
That's the specific items that would need improvement, not necessarily the availability of the survey?
Right. No, that's what I mean. The, the survey, the survey will be put on our website as we go through the process for the capital project. So that, that is, um, gonna happen. I wasn't sure of the two particulars you mentioned about what needed to be done at Sergeant. So I'm going to look into that.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you for the report. Appreciate it.
Yeah. Thank you. Great work.
Thanks to all the donations from the parents who helped make this possible and any membership, um, money that's, uh, given to the PTO where we're trying to put it right back into the hands of our, our students to help, uh, to help, uh, get some more books into everyone's hands. Thank you.
That's awesome. Thank you. Okay. Are there any parent groups that would like to speak? Oh, looks like there's another.
I have the chat open. So if anybody else, they'll pop up.
Give him one second. Okay. Seeing none, I'm going to move on to Matt's report.
I'm just going to be really, uh, brief tonight. First, just, uh, we will, uh, we'll have a, a section on the website, uh, for the capital project. Um, and we'll have the building condition survey up, uh, in that part. Uh, we'll start working on that tomorrow. So it could be something that's quickly done. It might be up by tomorrow. Or, uh, or by the end of this week. We, uh, you know, we sent an email or a letter out to the community, uh, a few weeks ago, just about, uh, starting to explore some further reopening efforts. And so, uh, we're in the midst of that right now. So I don't have any sort of formal update on this. Uh, we'll definitely be able to be more substantive at the next board meeting. But the high school has a, uh, a kind of a fuller schedule, starting on Monday of next week, in which the, uh, both groups of hybrid kids will be able to go through an A period day. Uh, on both days of their hybrid experience, uh, the high school, uh, schedule has um, been a challenge this year. And so we're excited to do that. And, and for either the remote students or the hybrid remote students at home, uh, when those other kids are in person, um, parts of the class will be live streamed, uh, and then Google meets will be open for the duration of the class, um, for students to participate, um, from home. And so we're excited to get that going and to have a fuller experience at the high school. And then our other focus areas at elementary, we're meeting with a group of elementary teachers, uh, tomorrow. We've surveyed elementary teachers and, uh, we're also doing walkthroughs of all the buildings. We've been slowed down just a little bit with some of the, uh, classroom, uh, observation, not observations, but some of the classroom walkthroughs that we've been doing, uh, just in terms of, uh, class, some of the classrooms, if they can have more students in them and things that need to happen with that. So we're in the midst of working on that. I still have a goal of doing, uh, like a community town hall, um, uh, next week, probably next Wednesday. Uh, and if we're not able to be really specific, I might postpone it, uh, by a couple of days. But, um, we'd like to see if there's at least some areas, um, where we can find ways to have, uh, our students in school a little bit more. So that is what a big thing that we're working on right now and, uh, we'll have more updates, uh, in the next few days and the next board meeting too.
Thank you. Any questions for Matt?
Uh, Matt, do you want to mention the district safety, uh, thing? Or do you want me to do it?
Uh, I was not planning on mentioning it right now. So if you want to mention it during board comment or-
Okay, we'll do.
Okay. Um, so we've begun to board comments and committee reports. Kristen?
Hey. So we have been facilities meeting this past week. The good news is that, um, there was an adjustment to the, um, dollar costs related to the items on our buildings and condition survey, uh, which, uh, allowed us to, um, it will, it will allow us to have, uh, a good deal more accomplished than we had originally thought in our next capital project. It also seems like the, um, the total caught, the total amount of money available to us, um, seems to be, uh, a little bit more than we had initially planned. Uh, we are going to be meeting next, oh, shoot. Sorry. I know this, um, I think we talked about the fourth. Am I correct?
Yes, March fourth.
March fourth. And we're going to do, are we, are we, I'm just timing wise. I'm sorry. Cause it, did we decide in a different time? And that one, or do we keep to seven o'clock?
Six o'clock.
Six. Okay. Yeah. So March fourth, six o'clock. Uh, we're just going to try to pack in a couple of more meetings because that while that change was good news, it sort of changes the shape of our conversation a little bit. I would really encourage all board members when that, when, you know, to look through, it's the updated buildings and condition survey that was shared with you by Anthony D'Amato. It's a Google document. Please look at it. And, um, there's also, uh, an educational areas file where you can also look at what we are thinking of doing, but, um, there's, it would be really important to have input and understanding as we shape this project. And we're going to sort of hit in high gear on this in the coming weeks because we're going to, with those revised numbers, now we have to start making some pretty concrete decisions about what we want to include that we have to do, which are the priorities for updating the buildings. And then, uh, the overall, um, approach of the, um, the educational, spaces being updated that we want to, and anything that's kid facing that we, that we want to include in this project. Um, so any input that you can give or any insight, or if you want to talk to me or any member of the committee about what we've been talking about, or please attend to the meetings now and start to, um, hear the discussion because we're then going to be moving into a public phase where we're taking input and then- Input and then um beginning to draft the plan. This goes to vote in October. So there's a lot that has to happen in the next couple of months. So that is uh, that's where we are. Does anybody have any questions now?
Thank you, Kristen. Um so the six o'clock, what time do you expect to end? Because I think the.
Diversity is the same night, yeah.
Matt, yeah, Matt was trying to schedule diversity at seven.
No, I know, we we actually, so um this was discussed at the last meeting, we just um because of this change and because of how much we have to kind of. It it affected our planning a little bit, so we'll try to, we'll make sure that he's at that meeting at seven. This is just so that we can touch base and get some. Some key uh decisions made. The plan for the next meeting is that all committee members come in with their priorities established and having reviewed the updated survey. That was the plan for this meeting. We, this past meeting was supposed to be everybody having their comments and their their sort of priorities. We were supposed to have the financial advisors come and present different scenarios, but this change that happened, which. Ultimately, like I said, is good news in terms of how much money we have and how much the items. Cost adjusted, which is great. It was really a mistake in the formula that wasn't caught. However, it did throw her timing off a little bit, so we have to get to that next meeting. I know for me personally, it shifted my priorities a lip, a little bit because my last set that I went through in the condition survey. Was really driven by numbers and when those numbers changed, so my priorities shifted a little bit. So we're gonna come into that meeting with those priorities and then with um some insight from the admins. About what they see for the education spaces and then we'll start pulling in. Together kind of horse trading a little bit on what we're going to do next and then move towards um community involvement input. And also starting to share with them our initial thoughts on what we've seen in the direction we think it should go in.
And there's a couple of tiers involved, right? So there's a needs survey, um the condition survey, which highlight the needs. And then there's, you know, there's, there's actually opportunity to do some wants, right?
Yes, so the needs are, so in the survey, you'll notice there's priority one, priority two, priority three. The priority one has been identified by our architects as um things that we really should look at and try to get updated very quickly. Or as soon, you know, as soon as we're able to. Two and three are kind of, these are, these are, you know, moving up the channel, but are going to need to be looked at or considered. We can also, you know, our facilities director or some principals who are in the buildings could say, you know, these, he has this listed as a two, but. For us, it's more of a one, so we need to sort of get that lined up because this is really based on our. Um engineering and architect firms perspective on what priority one and priority two and priority three are. Yes, but like, just like the last project. We want to tackle as many of those priority ones as we can, but we also really want to have an impact on the um on the experience in these buildings. And so um or on campuses, and so we then start looking at how we can create um those changes and include them in the plan as well.
And how how was um, sorry, that's my last question.
It's okay.
Our sustainability goal, so I mean, uh are we, do we have the opportunity to? To um design something that's more sustainable, that's more environmentally?
Yeah, so Tetra Tech has a pretty strong relationship with Nicerda and um Nicerda is moving uh very aggressively into the K twelve space. To help update and create more efficient buildings. We also fortunately or unfortunately have a lot of. You know, significant equipment investments in terms of aging boilers, uh so um. Bill Wispower, our um representative from Tetra Tech is going to, he's has a good relationship with Nicerda, had planned to contact them. To find out what programs were eligible for to make the buildings more efficient and perhaps additional funding that could go along with that. So yes, that's definitely um up there in terms of the plan and I I've been wondering about. Once we get the, these next couple of steps buttoned up, I would love the idea of um trying to do a student facing portion of this. Where there's an understanding of, you know, data collection and how we can create more efficient spaces and things like that, but. We're really not there until we get the project buttoned up and then we can kind of, and then it'll be a few years before it happens, so. There's a chance for maybe kids to look at data before the project and then after the project and things like that, but we're um, that's more of like future planning.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Kristen. Anthony White?
Uh the curriculum committee meeting has not happened since the last board meeting. Our meeting is uh February twenty fourth at two thirty. It's gonna take place via Zoom. I'll give updates after that. No additional comments.
Thank you. Craig?
Okay, do we have audio here?
Yep.
Very good. So one one comment I wanted to add about the uh. Facilities committee and the capital program, I think some people may not understand a building condition survey is. Just a survey about the existing conditions of the existing buildings. It's uh also the architects represented, what I think Anthony referred to as wants as opposed to needs. Yes, we have quite a list of. Things that are educational improvements and I do hope that uh in our going out to the public, we make the distinction. Because if if anybody looked at the building condition survey, they wouldn't see. All of those improvements that are under consideration, so just for the record, those are like two different categories. So um we had a meeting uh this past week of the audit and finance committee, which is now officially called that. And um we uh are now out soliciting for some volunteer members of the committee. Who would be non board members who have background expertise and understanding in the fields of accounting and finance. So um but in the meantime, we're we're soldiering on. We also had the some brief discussion about the um corrective action plan and the final internal auditor's report. Uh that's on the agenda tonight uh down at the bottom of the list. We didn't actually see the plan, at least I never saw a. Visual copy of it until I looked at the agenda tonight. We we also had a workshop where uh staff was explaining some of the elements in those regular treasures reports that we see. Lines full of numbers and so on, and we'll continue that. Uh that was interesting and uh. Shed some light on some of the details of those reports and make us better able to understand them. We look forward to kind of tag teaming with facilities and operations for our committee schedule. Since uh a lot of the same people involved and um. Let's see, I think that um. We we had some other discussion about uh a few other items that uh will probably be coming up on our agenda in the future. Including the possibility of looking at uh these financial reports on a regular basis. And to predigest them uh as they make their way toward the board meeting. So that's basically where we stand at this point. Hope for questions, comments.
Yeah, Craig, I, you know, I saw the advertisement for the for the community member and. And um no one comes to mind, but you know, if you know somebody on the board of like the Hudson Valley Credit Union or something like that, it may actually be a nice um recruit recruit there.
That's a thought that had occurred to us. I think you're right. There's a couple that we, we have several names and uh we'd like to find a few more and reach out. It's a good idea.
And if anybody knows anyone, anyone on the board that comes to mind, send their name our way.
Absolutely. Thanks, Craig. Anthony Singh?
Good evening, um so. The uh I I did attend the uh district wide safety meeting as uh as assistant chief of the ambulance corps. And um there's a, there's an update, there's an update um that's out for public review of the our safety plan. It includes a uh. A new section for protocols for public health emergencies and that's really due to um infection disease plan. And once it ends its third day comment, the board will consider uh for approval. Also, there's a door hardening update. Uh all it was recommended um. It's a security measure and that's also policy eighty one thirty on your agenda there. And uh they, it sounds like they've been pretty busy. The the emergency teams have been meeting. They are planning some tabletop exercises in the spring and you know, they're they're um, I did ask, you know, if their scenarios are realistic and I said, yeah, they're they're. Actually, they try to do scenarios on 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 what ifs questions that they ask among among them, so. And uh they ensure compliance with SED and you know, they um try to um. Uh make sure that everybody knows uh the unified uh. A system of incident command and and stuff like that, so um I'm pretty happy with the way uh. Safety team meeting went and um that's what I got on that. The um. The diversity committee, the next meeting is March fourth and I'd last, I'd like to ask another board member in cover for me because I do have a conflict at seven thirty. So um you know, if somebody could else could cover that meeting, I'd appreciate it.
I can go to that. Do we have a calendar for the district safety committee meetings? Because I was not aware that this was happening, but we are supposed to, I mean, I'm glad Anthony was there since we're supposed to have board representation.
I don't know when the next one is.
I didn't, I can't get it when I don't have it off, it's on my head.
Would you mind sending that?
Sure.
Thanks. Okay, thanks, Anthony. John?
Yes, the only comment I have is that uh my nonprofit organization called Label Foundation has recently started a basketball team. And uh we have a GoFundMe up on our social media accounts. If anybody would like to share or donate and uh we will be expanding. Between grades, we just started eighth grade and we will be expanding as time goes along and as um hopefully, you know. The COVID guidelines uplift and we can get things back to normal. And uh also in the next coming months, I will be going through the community with information regarding the CRS framework. Personally, and uh I will, the, on the cars, my personal email will be on there for anybody within the community that would like to connect with me and also. Help tackle this angle. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Flora?
Hi, um I wanted to start with uh something that I got from Diane Tansey. For those of you who don't know, she's the he- health teacher at um Beacon High School and she's fantastic and she. Is part of the wellness committee meeting, so because of that, she she's been sending information. And I wanted to flag that there is a free parent webinar hosted by the Mental Health Association of New York State. It's called uplifting black joy strategies to center wellness resilience and self care for black youth and families. It's taking place uh on the twenty fifth, it's at noon to one P M. And if you go to the um mental health um ed n y s dot org website, you can find more information about it. But I'll um I'll try to put it on social media tomorrow as well, just so people, people see it. Um and thanks to to Diane for for always um sort of having her finger on the pulse of all those events and and ways to help students. It's it's great. Uh I also wanted to um. Flag that uh the Lower Hudson Education Coalition, uh which we're members of, the the school board is. They've made several announcements uh about the their advocacy efforts that are going on right now. They posted a um and uh advocacy statement for Senate bill S forty four thirty. Which would basically reduce the number of signatures to run for Board of Ed in twenty twenty one. If I read the bill correctly, it would reduce the number needed here from one hundred to fifty for this year. They're also advocating right now for school funding um and to ease the challenges uh keeping school buildings open. If you want to lend your voice to these issues, anybody in the community, they have a great site where you can automatically send statements and look up your legislators, so if you visit. L H E C dot org slash voter voice, um all the information's there. It's really great and easy to use website. We have a wellness committee meeting this Wednesday at three thirty. Um we're going to be updating the wellness policy. Are talking about uh updating and assessing the wellness policy. We're gonna be um providing uh district and building level initiatives. Basically just updates on those, what's happening uh in the district. And if there's time, we're going to start brainstorming ideas for how to help students' mental health as we transition back to full time school, hopefully in the twenty one, twenty two school year. And I think that Zoom link will be out tomorrow and then the um. Public relations advocacy and legislative committee meeting is next Monday at eight, so there'll be a Zoom link on the way for that one soon, and that's it.
Thank you, Flora. Alyssa?
Good evening. Um I don't have any big updates tonight. The policy committee won't be meeting again until March first. So unless there are any questions about policies on the agenda for tonight, um I have no further comment.
Any questions for Alyssa? Okay, thanks, Alyssa. I have a few things. One, um Matt and I are meeting with Mayor Kiriyaku and the new city manager, Chris. I'm, I actually don't know his last name, I forget what his last name is, on Friday to go over. The list that we sort of put together as a board and figure out how we are gonna meet regularly, um so I will report back to you on that. Also, we are, I think, gonna try to move our committee meetings to in person again. I think we're. We're ready to do that. We've proven we can meet in person safely. Um in the past, they've been at the conference room in the district office. We're gonna move them to the LGI. At the high school so that there's room for the public to attend, and if we had a lot of public, we could always shift over into the high school. So um I think just consider that the default for committee meetings will now be in person unless we decide otherwise. Two out of the nine of us have done our board evaluation. I, just a gentle reminder to please do your board evaluation. It doesn't take as long as the superintendent evaluation and I think it's a great way to just take our temperature um about how we're doing. There were a few things that came up for me, just reading through of it, through it, one being that we um, this has come up in a, in a few different areas for me. To suggest that the board um commit to a code of ethics. I think it's a great way to um lead tone from the top. I forwarded something to the audit committee about this, I can forward it to the rest of the board and maybe we can um put it on the agenda sometime in the next couple of meetings. If everyone is agreeable to that. And then the last thing, I just forwarded everything, or this email to the board, it is um, it's a federal advocacy issue that I'm wondering if we can put on the agenda for. Our meeting on Monday. It's the um, there's a program called, from the Department of Justice, called the Community Oriented Policing Hiring Program. And um it comes through a group called Local Progress and they do a lot of advocacy. That doesn't feel appropriate for the board because even though they do advocate for public education, there's a lot of different. Things on their list always, but this, this felt more um targeted toward education and this is a grant that's available, but it's a, it's a pretty narrow. Definition of how this money can be used and they are advocating that the money be, you know, that we define. Our um the use by community safety rather than policing, so it looked really interesting to me. I don't know, Flora, if you would be okay with putting on the agenda, but. Okay, great, so we can talk more about that then. And um that is all from me. Thank you.
Have a question?
Yeah.
Yeah, and the board evaluation, that was circa.
Um, yeah, and the board evaluation, that was circulated initially by email, right?
If you go on.
Buried pretty far down, but.
So if you just go to the super eval link, um, it's it's in the dashboard. Do you need a link to super eval?
That would probably speed us up if we had a refreshing link to that. Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't know if there's, I don't know if there's a way to get a link because I was looking at that too. It's like super eval dot com and then just.
Right, I can't link you the thing.
You could Google it. Just Google super eval and it will spring into the log on.
Yeah, what happens is. You log on and it automatically knows who you are from which school and then you have to navigate down to. To board, the board of eval, not not Matt's eval, and then your twenty twenty one.
Yeah, if anyone has any questions, I think I did pin it so that it would come up to board eval, but if you have any questions, just let me know. Uh, okay, so moving on to unfinished business, the first thing we have is to discuss committee procedures. I put together a draft based on our conversation at the last meeting. Anthony White had a couple of suggestions to it. Did everyone have a chance to review it?
I did. I I. I I just want, I just cha- I I did change the title on there just to make it clar- to clarify that it's board committees, not district committees.
Okay.
And um unless unless we do wanna um include some procedures for board members that do attend district committees, which. I'm 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 for, right, so. Um, what district wants to do.
Well, I mean, we can, we can throw in there that a board member can report to back to the board when attending, after attending a district committee.
But that but that the 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 minutes or summary would be would be the district to do that responsibility or something like that.
Well, I mean, same as what's in our, the current procedure, that's up to, that's kind of up to the committee. Um, so we could even, you know, we could add that in. That a board member can choose whether or not to take minutes for the district committees that he or she attends. Do you want me to add a?
You mean notes, not minutes.
Like a summary, yeah.
Sorry, I mean, I not, I just wanna.
Yeah, right, right. I mean, a board member is not necessarily going to be responsible for minutes, but to give. I mean, the the idea behind this is, one, so that we have some sort of record and accountability. Um, but also so that we can have this easily available on the website so that if a community member is interested to know what. Is going on with that work, they have an easy way to see a summary of it.
Yeah. So I think we, so I think we should standardize that stuff to the style of minutes and everything. I just feel like it's all over the map. So maybe we create a form that. At least a standard so that it's always like title of the meeting, attendees, date, agenda. And then detailed discussion or something like that. Just create a form.
We, one thing we talked about, I think I talked about it with Flora maybe, was that we um basically base it on the agenda. So the chair puts out the agenda, you add notes, you know, like this was completed, this we decided to, you know. Do something else with, um, but but yeah, if that form and we could attach to the procedures.
I will say, so so I ta- I take notes for wellness and then I also take notes for B R O L. And the the formats are completely different. So for wellness, it's basically the title of the person speaking. And then a summary of what they talk about because the form that lends itself better to the format of that meeting. So I think it might be good to allow some flexibility within that. But then there are certain requirements, right? Like every meeting should have an agenda. And then, you know, maybe every meeting should um keep track of. The major points of the agenda, but it doesn't necessarily have to be written in a particular way or formatted in a particular way. Um, but I maybe we leave it up to the discretion of the person who's taking the notes. I I don't know. I'm I just think um. Maybe there's gotta be, there's a little wiggle room in there, I think, for doing things organically, depending on what works.
I just mean the top of the form, like everything's sort of uniform. So when somebody. Yeah, that the details below, like how somebody, if you capture the the summary of the discussion in a particular way, there's. A lot of flexibility for that, but just so that there's almost for like. The for like your eye knows where to go, like when you.
Right.
Go to the site and you're looking at the minutes, you're always going to be see see the this key information up top.
Right.
Kind of details on the bottom of the discussion, like the discussion can always be captured in a very flexible way, but I think. Date, time, attendees.
Name of the committee.
Name of the committee, agenda, like all that upfront, just so that people can orient themselves pretty quickly. I think would be good.
So maybe uh so may- maybe there needs to be a sample form created that's attached to the procedures. Um, the other, that's fine, so.
We want these forms attached to our minutes when we report out or do we want them sitting on a website somewhere?
They would go, so every every committee would have a place on the website and they would be attached to it.
Yeah.
The website and they can.
A repository for every committee, yeah.
So I'm just trying to understand, the purpose of this is what?
Um, well, the purpose of the whole thing.
The purpose of the forms that you're talking about for the notes, because I don't think like the. Chairperson should be taking minutes that are formalized and then put up on a website. What happens if they're inaccurate?
Well, the other thing I was gonna um ask is, do we want the board to approve these minutes? Um, before they go, Anthony, you had put that in the notes, just that the board should be informed before, but maybe the board should approve them.
That was for more for the goals piece because it was the minutes and the goals together at the bottom of the form.
Hmm.
Couldn't it be as simple as the members of that particular committee get to look at the the notes that have been summarized before they're posted? And if everybody on that committee agrees that that is accurate to what was said and nobody has any changes, then it gets posted.
I don't see a problem with that.
So I see no problem with that either.
I think the purpose is the fact that a lot of things like. Don't get captured and don't build on one another.
Yeah.
I mean, I started keeping track of facilities and I haven't been doing that as much because. I've been running the meetings, but it would just be like Groundhog Day. Sometimes we'd come back. And we wouldn't remember what we had talked about last time or where we were. You know, you could have the agenda, but it was like a lot of things were dropping off. Without being completed and then they'd pop back up later. So it's a really good way of tracking what was covered in the meeting. What were open-ended things um that needed to be resolved and brought forward? And just a really important reference point for progressing the work of the committees.
It's also really important because everybody who is necessarily interested in what goes on in those committees isn't going to be able to attend. And there's information that's that's captured in those meetings that I think are in the interest of the general community. And so having that information on the website gives them access to it.
Yeah, I think it builds community engagement, which I think is important.
Yeah, and Alyssa, we.
Does that make sense?
We picked up a couple, a couple of loose loose policies that were lost over time, right? That something was like, hey.
Yeah.
Anything with this yet, yeah.
Yeah, I think it's, I think I like the idea also of standardizing. Just even the top of the form. Um, it's good to standardize things. You know, in in my corporate life, we standardize processes between departments. Uh, I'm kind of thinking about this the same way. It creates like cohesion for when the community views these documents. They all look like they're coming from the same place and that's important.
Yeah, and I I know from my life that there's, we have a project management software that we use and. Standard form for minutes from meetings is built in and it's so helpful. Like I actually, just before this meeting. I haven't been on a bunch of calls for a project I'm about to work on. I was able to go and quickly look at the forums of like what was covered at those meetings and I. I'm all caught up and it just feels like it's it's kind of best practice in anything I've been involved in before.
Yep. And also, if we have a running um history of these minutes. And you know, what happens often in, I know in policy, we're like, oh, didn't we cover that policy? Uh, oh, I don't remember. Well, if we have the documents, we can search them. We can search the keywords and see like, oh, yes, we did cover this on X date. And here's where we stand.
But I think my concern is that a board member is taking on this responsibility and it should be a district employee or administration that oversees the committee doing that piece.
Oh, I'm not disagree with that, but I don't think that that's been, I don't think we always get somebody at those.
There's always an administrator.
Right, there is always an administrator. Also, within the committee procedures, I did write that the board would have um. The, you know, the opportunity to ask for the board clerk to take minutes if that felt necessary.
Yeah, I think it can be up to this discretion of the the chair of the committee. I know for policy, I don't need. I don't need Kelly or someone to to take minutes because the policy meetings basically. You know, everything that we're doing is being recorded anyway. And the minutes kind of end up coming out of the meeting anyway. But if we can capture it all in one document.
And for facilities, I started taking whatever minutes such as they were before I chaired the committee because. I felt like nobody was capturing what was happening in the meetings and it was important to track it in a more efficient way. Um, I don't think it's ideal to run a meeting and um like an active meeting and take minutes at the same time. But I think that you can always, when we have the sustainability committee, um. Somebody would always volunteer, like I'll be the minutes person. And um that would where be where the standardized form comes in because somebody could take minutes, send that content. And you plug it into the form so that all of the, so they don't have to have the standard form from the district, but they capture the discussion. And then all the details from the meeting are standardized and copied and pasted into that form. But I think to your point, sorry.
A question.
To your point about, uh, to your point about, I think there are some times when it would be important to have. You know, uh, the board clerk or or an administrator are taking the minutes. Because I I think that there are some committees where it's like there's a lot of. Um, like I can use facilities, for example, like we, the last meeting. When the total changed of the the sum of what we have, I mean, in my mind, that project has always been twelve million dollars. And so the fact that it was, it's now eighteen million, even though that's great news. I can tell you, I'm positive that that, everybody was, everybody internally has been talking to each other and doing their job. You know, Bill's been talking to Anne Marie, Anne Marie's been talking to the financial advisor, they've been talking to Matt or An- Anthony Tabato. But closing that loop on that communication would be a really important piece and that would be something that that knowledge is something that the administrator or the person. In-house would bring to the meeting and could in sort of infuse in the notes and create a more cohesive. Story to have a better, you know, understanding of the big picture of what's going on. And I think that that would be really helpful to have. It's just not a point of every meeting.
Wanted to go back to uh Anthony White's uh question about, is there, I think I understand you correctly, Anthony, is there? Is there an administrator who's assigned to the question of keeping track of policies? Is that what you mean? Because I don't know.
There's an administrator that oversees each district, each uh board committee, such as for policy, it's uh Bill Rolon. For facilities, I would say it's Anne Marie. For curriculum, it's Eric, but that's a district committee. Um, but you take any committee, there's an administrator, a district administrator that's attached and kind of oversees that committee work. Whereas I'm not comfortable, I think that it's not the board's role to be taking minutes that get published on a website. I understand if you want to report out on it at the board meeting and you take notes for yourself, so you can report out as to what your committee is doing. But I I I have a concern about having board members take. Minutes or notes and posting them on a website. I get the track record in developing a form, but I think that's that's a. That's a district administration job. That's not our role.
I see. Uh, I I think my agreement with you is that there should be an administrator who's attached to each committee. Whether that administrator is doing the report or whether somebody from the committee does the report, that's kind of a jump ball. I could, I could see it going different ways. Myself, but uh it's good to know who's who's the administrator in charge. Uh, but you raised kind of another point there, which was who's like keeping track of of policies, that discussion we just had about. Have what policies are coming up, which ones have been done and and are they in conformance to the ethical laws and rules and so on? That's that's kind of a separate issue.
Yeah, I I think so. I mean, let's try to, let's try to focus on just getting through this conversation and um because I feel like. Um, I see what you're saying, Anthony. I mean, the the agenda is is made by the chair of the committee. With the administrator who is in charge of the committee, if if necessary, is what I have in the current procedures. Um, if the notes are based on that. Uh, is that, you know, I mean, I I'm seeing this as being pretty basic, but and everyone can take more elaborate notes if they want. But it's really just to have some sort of. You know, sense of how the work is moving forward. And I'm fine with having it being the responsibility of the administrator that's um on the committee. I mean, Matt, what do you think about that?
I guess I. Uh, I I I don't know, because I I where I get uncomfortable with that is like we're, are we recording what board members are saying in the meeting? Like I, I understand like a basic. This is what we did or this is what we're moving forward with, but then are we like making notes of different board members and like I.
I think it's a.
I'm starting to get a little lost with all this. Like I understand kind of keeping a record of. I, I don't know, I.
In my mind, it's very task oriented. So for example, uh, you know, the the P R committee, we have the, we have the agenda. Um, you know, and it can, and I mean, I can even look at our our agenda for next week, which says like, you know. Discuss these advocacy issues and you know, so underneath it could say like. Um, decided not to pursue this advocacy issue, decided to send it to the next board meeting. You know, I mean, it's it's not a.
So it's not.
I don't know if, I don't know if that one is.
It's a meeting summary and it's a, it's a meeting summary then.
It is, but is that one a good example? Because advocacy is kind of like a board thing, right?
Well, we are, I mean, this is board committees that I'm talking about, or we can talk about facilities.
But we're talking about, we're talking about an administrator writing the notes for the advocacy meeting.
Right, well, that's why I had a board member say down, because that seemed.
I'm fine, we'll, we'll, we'll do whatever. I'm I'm fine with it.
Well, so I mean, we as a board need to figure out what what we think about this. It is, it's a board committee, which is exactly why I. Had a board member doing that work or deciding that we needed the board clerk to do it, but you know. The goal remains the same to have some sort of. You know, record of what what's going on in these meetings for ourselves and for the public.
If there's an admin, if there's an admin on every committee and we're saying that we're going to share these notes, you know, that they're very basic notes. And we're going to share these notes with the committee before they're published, then essentially, we're, you know, we're putting that approval in the admin's hands. They're they're looking at it, they're making sure it's okay. And I mean. The, you know, and at the risk of getting a little off of what you're saying, like. The wellness committee as a district committee, the the format is a little different. We are like quoting what people are saying, but the goal of that, that those minutes have been. Sharing what different buildings are doing so that everybody is aware of what others are doing, you know, in terms of wellness. Uh initiatives that they're doing. And and that's why it's formatted that way. Um, and and you know, the the district admin has always looked at those notes before they've gone on the site. And there's never been an issue. So I I do feel like if the, if there are eyes on them before they get published, then doesn't that sort of. Sort of mitigate. Sort of mitigate that concern.
I think there's two concerns here. I think one concern is whose job is it to do, take the, take the, write the summary? And two, you know, what approval do we follow to get that summary online? I think Matt's concern is the former.
No, I'm, I'm really, I'm fine with an admin doing it, that's fine.
Well, we need to decide as a board if we, if, if we're fine with it, if we feel that that's the. The role of the administrator. I mean, I assumed that there would be collaboration there.
Yeah, I'm, I'm actually, I'm actually quite confused that this has become contentious. I'm really surprised by it. So I'll just say that. I mean, this is like. Just capturing the work of the committees in a summarized form if somebody, I, I feel like in a collaborative way like. And I, I don't know, like this happens in the PTO, like very organically, like somebody's like, I'll take all the note, take the notes and I'll send them to somebody. Somebody else can clean them up and make them publishable. I, I, I feel like maybe we should just. Move past this right now and circle back to it because it seems like there's, we've touched on something that is. I think there's a lot of probably misunderstanding going on right now and it doesn't seem to be productive. So I think we should move on to other parts of this. Committee work and maybe circle back to this.
I kind of agree with that. One thing I'd throw in is that we could let each committee decide. Each time how they're going to handle it. That's, that's another way.
Yeah, I mean, there's a fair amount of leeway for each committee within this. You know, the basic responsibilities of committee is to appoint the chair, to establish a calendar of meetings. To decide about the minute taking so that, you know, it is loosely in there. And then decide on the timing of the agenda and setting goals. So can we agree about those basic things?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, and so within, within that, that it does say in the current way that it's written. Decide if any committee member is willing to be responsible for minute taking, the committee also has the option of asking for the board clerk. And I can add or district administrator to take minutes. Does that satisfy the concerns? Okay, so. The only, the, the two questions that I expected to come up, one Anthony White brought up that. Should there be a process established in case more than three board members want to be part of a specific committee? It's always been very cordial in the past, but I can, I was thinking that maybe we put a line, you know, in the case that. More than three board members are interested, you know, we, they have to go through the same sort of nomination process that we have for officers. Does that sound okay to everybody? I don't expect this ever to happen.
Yeah, I know. It just feels like it could be like some serious hurt feelings if there's, there's people really interested in the committee and. I don't know, but yeah, that sounds fun.
Well, that's, I mean, that's sort of a last resort, like if we can just sort of talk about it. And then the other question was, do we want. Both the goals and the minutes to be approved by the board? I would recommend this. I think it's important for the board to buy into both the goals and for the minutes to have some sort of. Check on them for accuracy. So I feel like the, the board vote is that.
I mean, I think we should call them meeting summaries because I think minutes would be, is, implies something more detailed and specific. To like, you know, people being quoted or something like that, but. If it's just a summary of like, we're capturing the work of the committees and what's moving forward and generally where there was consensus and where. Things were tabled and things like that, I think that's better.
Okay, a meeting summary. That's good. Okay, does everyone feel, yeah.
So should we just, would the process be like who, the summaries would be provided to the, to you beforehand and then. They would be put on the agenda for, agenda for approval or?
Yep, that's what I was thinking.
So kind of circumvented what I was saying before. So it's going to be the board members doing the summary?
It's going to be up to the committees to decide, the individual committees currently. This is something that has sort of been happening in an informal way in some of the committees. So this is an attempt to formalize.
I get the formalizing piece and the reporting out piece. My concern is that you're publishing something that will go on and you're creating a history. And you're having someone that is not an employee of the district create that history based on their perception of the summary.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know why that's a problem. Can you explain that a little better?
Anthony.
It's not a board member's role to take summaries and stuff, like typically when summaries are reported out. It should be conversed with whatever administrator is being there. Again, we're, we only have one employee. And I get the committees are board committee, board committees, but there could be. And I get what Flora was saying about having eyes on it from the administrator beforehand. I just think that it's. Kind of overstepping our role that we're publishing something that should be done. That's the work of the district. That's not the work of the board.
About this.
Yeah, that's a good idea. See if there's, if there's anything about board committees, because otherwise we're just in this weird.
Yeah, because, because the board has voted on, on products made by board members before. And I mean, that's what the.
Probably, Nisba probably has like something about this. So why don't we just wait for that?
So I'm going to make the, you know, the edits that we've decided here and I'll check in with Nisba and we can, we can revisit it. Is that okay with that?
Yeah, good plan.
Okay.
Thank you.
The next order of business is the nominations and elections for Bosie's board. We can nominate an unlimited number of people for these seats. There are three open seats.
Well, only one has come to our meeting, right?
That's correct. Well, so I'm just gonna, there, there are these letters attached from all of the people seeking the nomination. I'm just wondering, do we have any nominations?
Like to nominate Karen Smythe.
Do we have a second for that?
Second.
Karen Smythe has been nominated. Are there any comments or questions?
I'd like to nominate Ed McCormick.
Okay, Ed McCormick. Is there a second for Ed?
Second.
Okay, comments or questions about Ed? Are there any other nominations? I would like to nominate. Marie Johnson.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Flora. Are there any comments or questions about that?
Close nomination.
What, what'd you say? Sorry.
It's a motion to close nominate. I don't know what procedure.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not exactly sure about that either. Do we have to vote on?
So, so yeah, I moved, I moved that we vote on all three nominations.
Okay, do I have a second on that?
Thank you.
Craig, all in favor? Opposed. I'm in favor, so it passes eight zero. So these three nominations will be sent over to Bosie's and we'll see them. But with whatever other nominations they have. On the, with the Bosie's budget. Okay, thank you. Next, we have the consent agenda. Sorry, hang on. Too many windows open. The use of the consent agenda permits the Board of Education to make more effective use of its time by adopting a single motion to cover those relatively routine matters which are included. Any member of the board who wishes to discuss individually a particular piece of business on the consent agenda. May so indicate and that item will be considered and voted on separately, thus preserving the right of all board members to be heard on any issue. Are there any items from the consent agenda that a board member would like to have polled?
Yes, I would like to have twelve point oh nine, that's the student representatives to the board. And twelve point one seven, which is the Financial Corrective Action Plan.
Okay, any others? Okay, can I have a motion to approve twelve point oh one through twelve point sixteen?
So moved. Second.
Alyssa, second by Kristen. Are there any comments or questions about this?
Twelve point oh seven, thanks for the donation, the mass from the Fischke Rotary Club.
Yeah, that's awesome. Any other comments? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Opposed. I'm in favor, passes eight to zero. Can I have a motion to approve twelve point oh nine? First reading of the student representative to the board.
Moved, Anthony.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
One of us will second.
Yeah, one of you is the first, one of you is the second. Comments or questions?
Yeah, so like, we, we really have gone through the past year without any. And I'm not sure it's all because of COVID or what, but anyway, the process for selecting. Seems to me that it just, we just bypassed the whole thing and sort of dump it on the superintendent. It seems to me that there should be some student voice in that whole process at some point somehow. So if we, if we adopt it as is. My comment to the superintendent would be, could you give us some enlightenment about how you would go about that? And how you would get some student voice into the selection process. I'm, I'm not sure it's an election. But in other places where this has been done, sometimes it is the. Some student council people are delegated. In other cases, somebody nominates and then the superintendent selects. That kind of thing. Or maybe the, the board members get involved in it somehow. What are your thoughts on this, Mr. Superintendent?
We, you know. We really haven't. I don't, I mean, it's kind of. The, the people who've done it in the past have been the people who've applied essentially, so. I'm not sure we're quite ready to have like an election for this. I don't have any thoughts beyond that. I prefer right now to keep it with people applying and. And, and I decide, honestly, it becomes more of a recruiting thing.
Okay. And, and this is a difficult time to do it because of COVID just complicating everything too, but.
I mean, I, I think my goal with this was to pick it up and have someone sort of, or two, one or two people finish this year and then do it next year. You know, it's, it's. I think. And I, I don't, maybe this is a future discussion. I think, I think capturing a way. For the students to be involved. And I think we kind of started to do this the last go around where they can be involved kind of at the beginning of the meeting. Would be helpful in the recruiting part. So.
Thank you.
I think I'm, this is just even the beginning of this meeting. I, I, it just reminded me of how much I miss having some students around and that perspective. So for this year, if there's any opportunities that come up on the agenda to have student input or student attendance or presentation. It would be really, it would be really welcome, because I know tonight it felt like really nice to see that, to see that student. It's always such a like good reminder of why we're all doing this. I mean, I know we're, sometimes we're all trapped in committee meetings with each other and we're like. I just want. But when you, when these kids come to the meeting, it's like, I always feel like, I love everyone here and I'm so glad we're doing this. I would like more of that.
I totally agree. Are there any other comments or questions? All in favor of twelve point oh nine?
Hi.
Hi.
Opposed. I'm in favor, passes eight to zero. Can I have a motion to approve twelve point one seven? The corrective action plan in response to the internal audit report?
Actually, what I'd like to do is move that we table it. Because this has not been discussed. I think my connection is unstable. Can you hear me still?
Yeah.
Okay, I wanted to suggest tabling this back to the Audit and Finance Committee. We discussed some of the. Contents of it, but we hadn't seen the whole thing actually written out yet. I don't think it was done at that point. Is in process and there are parts of it that particularly with regard to the details of the. Purchasing regulations that have not yet been completely thought out and written out by the finance department. So. I don't know that there's any urgency to this. Nobody's going to be. Put out, I think if we deferred it for a chance to look at it at the Audit and Finance meeting. I think something as important as a corrective action plan is something that goes through a committee. For a deeper discussion and at nine fifty one PM. At the end of a board meeting, I don't think we're ready to do that. At least, I hope we're not ready to do that.
So do you mind if I say something? So a corrective action plan is, is, is exactly that. It's a plan of how to address. The things that were in an internal audit report. And again, I do a corrective action plan every year for the external audit. And some of the things are not carried out and some of them are, and it's a plan to move forward. I don't have a problem with you tabling it. We've already addressed some of this already and we've started the process. It just formalizes it if, if the board would approve it because then it gives. Me some teeth to move forward with our staff to get this actually done.
So. That's an interesting question, some teeth to, to move forward. I mean. Then becomes a board direction, right?
Well, the, so Craig, the purchasing policy is something that the board approves. And the purchasing regulation is a superintendent's regulation, so it's a process. So I don't know by putting it to the committee. Since it's not a board motion, it's, it's really the nuts and bolts of how we do our, our job in the district. The policy is definitely going to come back to the policy committee in June because it needs to be looked at and adopted for the reorganization meeting. But this actually, if the board approves this, this is a plan to move it forward so that I can continue the work. And get the purchasing process concluded. Like I said, I've started it already with some of the directors. But I can finalize the purchasing regulation. I can get it out, I can get the process out so that by the beginning of the next fiscal year, it's all up and running. Along with the policy review.
It seems to me that any kind of things that are going on in the district that are covered by the. Order of a committee are open to review by that committee. I don't see that you need us to approve it immediately. There's no deadline from the state or anything. This is an internal matter for us, right?
Well, they issued the report, normally they would, the corrective action plan has to move forward. Cause I need to, I need to submit it to State Ed.
Yeah, they do request a corrective action plan and I see what you're saying, Craig, but I do, I do think that. That's a level of accountability that we certainly want to circle back to the corrective action plan and see what was done, but it is. To me, the corrective action plan is, is a response to what will I do? And so like the purchasing regulations are the things that will be done that we definitely want to see through the committee. But I'm not sure that the plan. Needs to wait until those things are done.
Does the, well, here's just, I think there's the cup, two different issues here. Like Emery, does, was this plan. Sent to our auditors and they felt it was sufficient to address the issues that they had identified?
The purchasing regulation came from NISBA, so it's attached to our purchasing policy. It's very detailed. And I am, if you read in, in the corrective action plan, I am taking the consideration of the internal audit on the levels of. Verbal quotes, written quotes, and then actual RFP and bidding. So those are their recommendations. I'm basically accepting all the recommendations of the internal audit, but I need to formalize it in a plan. Let approved by the board and then I can submit to State Ed, because I'm required to do that as well.
So I, I understand that, I think that what Craig. So I, I understand that. I think that what Craig is saying is that. What we're trying to do, I, I was thinking about this a lot today because when I was reading through it. I think what, when I think about the goal of the audit committee, I think about like, I think about the fact that. For like 12, like you've had. Like 10 different processes. Like I feel like you've had to sort of just. Function in your head and move everything along and keep everything together for a long time and that. There's been an ever changing cast of characters that like you don't really, you, there's things you have to report out and communicate, but there's this like. Piece of. Of how that's communicated that. That we're trying to develop and none, none of us has any real experience with it. Like it's not something that has been historically done here. So. There's, we want this, we want this committee to function in a certain way. Part of it is just so that we really have, we get trained. And told that we're supposed to ask questions and understand. And so I think that's kind of the point of the committee is to be able to really. Understand what's going on and be able to say like, not only do I understand it and it was explained to me, but I feel satisfied and good about it and I can endorse it. And so getting the corrective action plan shortly before. You know, this meeting, it just makes it, it's like one of those things where I, I read through it and it seemed to match everything that was in the report. It all makes sense. But if everybody hasn't had the chance to digest it, it's, it's going against what we're trying to establish.
That's exactly right.
And so it's not a, it's not that the plan isn't good. I think that, so Craig, with that said. I think if we identify that there's a way we want this, this type of discussion to happen in the future, are you willing to move forward with the plan? Tonight?
Yeah. It's not that I have problems with the plan. It's with the process and I agree with what you said. Is that we're trying to build up the committee processes. So for anybody who doesn't know. We only have one audit meeting a year in the past. And I appreciate your advocacy, by the way, in trying to build up this committee so that it's more of a committee that has a more regular review. Gets educated, asks the good questions and gets timely good answers on a regular. Formal basis. We're a formal board and we run a $76 million budget, you know? So in this district. So every, every part of that is subject to a review or a look see by a committee. As we do in the other committees. So this is a committee that's building up and growing up. And is now taking the district to a much higher level. And I recognize that it's going to be a while before. All the pieces fall into place and we know how it, how it works because we're still, still building it, you know? You, you know, it's like they say, you're flying the plane while you're building it. So yeah, I'm okay with.
Yeah, because I think it's an unfair ask. We're asking you to do something in a way that you've never done that before. And so we all need to kind of. Figure out how to, how that process should work. So yeah, in the future. Will, we'll ask for more of a heads up on something, especially something we have to accept and vote on.
That's good.
Okay. Good point.
I do have one tiny question about it. The number six. The district currently distributes code of ethics to our board members. Is that a code of, of ethics or is it a conflict of interest?
It's a conflict of interest.
Okay.
They had, they worded it as a code of ethics. I did share with them. The conflict of interest statement, so I can change that if you'd like.
I would, just because I, I think we should do that. We, I do think the board should adopt a code of ethics separately. So yeah. Okay, so can we have a motion?
So a motion to approve 12.17 as amended.
Second.
Kristen, any other comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I am in favor, so it passes eight to zero. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Kristen, second?
Second.
Flora, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? I'm in favor, passes eight zero at 10 PM. Thank you. Have a great night, everyone.
Have a great night.
Good night.
Night.